March 25th, 2019 meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. The board is just coming out of a paperwork review session and I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM and start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our former members, John Burnell, who has left the board. I'd like to take a second to recognize John for his years of service and ask you to come up, John. And in recognition for nine years of dedicated service to the citizens of Litchfield presented by the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
(applause). I think I just saved my head, buddy. You know, I've served nine years and was supportive of the citizens of Litchfield. That's why I was there for nine years. I learned a lot. I served a lot of good board members, these folks included. Served a lot of good employees. The one thing we haven't signed pretty well is great employees. So, again, thank you and I'll be around if I can give anybody some help.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is swearing in of the two new selectmen, Kevin Lynch and Rob Leary.
My mother's coming in.
Wait. Well, wait. I want to just recognize the families and friends of the selectmen for coming and want to thank them for joining us tonight. And Kevin's mom comes in and we're all set.
When you get to be there.
And our esteemed town clerk will do the swearing in for both members.
Where would you like them to be?
Wherever you want them to be. We're all set.
Does the camera go a certain way?
Jen, just where do you want them for the camera?
Uh, right there, it's fine. Okay.
Great.
Over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes the young guy walk.
Can I get a stool?
You're okay. Yes, this guy's little chair. You should have. Want me to go over there?
Yes.
There's no way.
It's like looking in the mirror.
All right, Jen, hold.
Uh, but face this way. They're gonna face you. They're gonna be staring.
Yeah, they should, yeah, they should face.
Okay, can you stand over here for good walking view?
Just 'cause you're short.
Hold on. Terry, one second. Let... Is that the picture of it?
Delayed, delayed.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay, reach your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent on you as board of selectmen members to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
You done?
You done?
board.
Thank you.
And the next order of business is the election of officers and we will elect a chair and a vice chair. And at this point, we'll take nominations for chair. And I'm going to take a bit of chairman's privilege and offer the first nomination. I would like to nominate Stephen Weber for chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Are there any other nominations for chair of Board of Selectmen? Okay, hearing none? All in favor of electing Steve Weber chair of the Board of Selectmen, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0-1. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Now for vice chair, accept nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Kurt Schaefer for vice chair.
Mr. Schaefer has been nominated for a vice chair. Is there a second? I'll second. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Brent Lemire.
I respectfully decline. Thank you.
Well, you told me.
No, respectfully. I appreciate, thank you very much. Are there any other nominations?
I'm too new.
Okay, all in favor of Kurt Schaefer being elected vice chair of the board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Aye.
Kevin, what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Rob?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Motion carries 4-0-1. Congratulations. And at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Weber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd take an opportunity to thank Brent Lemire for his leadership, guidance, and knowledge over the last two years as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Really appreciate it. Next order on the business is committee assignments. First one is budget committee. Is there anybody who would like to take budget committee? Kevin, I know that you during the election process showed a deep interest in the budgets of the school and of the town. Would you be up for being our representative on the budget committee?
No. I need to learn more before I go there.
With that said, is there anyone else that would like to? Bob?
If no one else takes it, I'll take it.
Is there anyone else that has an interest in?
I will back Bob up. I will be the alternate, but see, I can't because of my Thursday night and other meetings. I would be the alternate, Bob, for you.
Good.
All right.
With that, Mr. Leary will be the budget committee representative. Next on the docket is planning board representative. Is there anyone who would like to sit on the planning board?
That's something that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
That'll do.
With that, Mr. Lynch will be our representative for the planning board. Next is the recreation representative. Kurt, you want to stay with that?
Yeah, I'll take that.
All right, Mr. Schaefer will take that. Next is the conservation representative. I guess by default, I will be the representative of the conservation. And Brent, would you like to stay with the heritage?
Sure.
Okay. And so, Mr. Lemire will do the heritage. Next thing on the agenda is a review and approval of consent items. First, we have the March 11th, 2019 meeting minutes. We have a counts payable manifest of March 19th, 2019, and $95,387. And on March 26th, 19, $643,887.10. We have a payroll manifest of March 21st, 2019, at $62,869.54. And of March 28th, 2019, in $56,929.88. We have a timber tax levy of $81.87. We have a timber tax abatement of $87.87. We have a tax abatement denial of MAP 13 Lot 113. We have a land use charge change tax of $25,500. We have a gravel tax levy of $3,203.54. We have an intent to excavate of MAP 21 Lot 18. We have MS 232 report of appropriations in $7,010,862. Are there any items anybody would like to have removed from consent? Is there any additional business we'd like to add?
One other item for additional business. Late today, I received the purchase and sale agreement, which has been reviewed by our legal counsel, prepared by the seller's legal counsel. And I'd like to discuss having the board sign that this evening so we could start the process of doing the title search and schedule a closing.
Okay, should we add that just to the business further down?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Moved by Mr. Lemire. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Any discussion? Are you all in agreement? Signify aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Passes 5-0-0. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:15 PM. First item on business is skid steer grant acceptance, $5,000. Mr. Brown?
Okay. So, I'm really pleased to report to this board, you recall probably about three months ago, Dave Mellon had come with a request to trade in his skid steer, because we're at that point where we could realize a really good trade-in value. And he was very hopeful that he'd be able to apply for this grant, receive some funding. He didn't know if he'd receive the maximum amount or not at the time. The $5,000 represents the max that you can receive for this program. So, just in summary, really a good purchase here and I think it's something we should always be looking at down the road. We purchased a brand-new skid steer for $35,000. We received $12,000 trade-in. We received this grant of $5,000. And total cost was $18,389 to purchase that brand-new skid steer. And that comes with a warranty because we're able to purchase the extended warranty for five years. So, pretty much a maintenance-free piece of equipment for the next five years down there, all paid for through grants, trade-in, and user fees. So, this was funded out of the revolving fund. But for this, that was just the summary. I just need a motion from the board to accept the $5,000 grant proceeding.
So, move. Move by Mr. Schaefer. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstained? Motion passes 5-0-0. Next item on the agenda is review of fee scheduled changes. Mr. Brown?
So, I've been working with department heads. I was approached by Dave Mellon. He had some issues that are happening down at the transfer facility, just the change in the recycling market. And as Dave is always trying to be proactive, making sure that we're covering the costs of disposal, he came to me and asked that we consider revising or implementing some new fees. So, I did send correspondence around to department heads and see if there was any interest so we could try to attack this all at once. I did receive input from the town clerk's office, so there's some issues here that we will discuss. This is scheduled for, tentatively right now, I plan on scheduling this for public hearing at our next meeting, month of April the 8th. Before I went ahead and scheduled for public hearing, I wanted to go through these fees with the board, make sure you understand them and are comfortable if you have questions that I can, you know, get the response back to you before our hearing. So, the first issue is tire fee. We actually have an existing fee of $2 for disposal. And just due to the increasing cost for disposal, Dave's recommending that we change it from $2 to $3. The next two items are something new. The mattress fee and box spring slash foundation fee. So, the market now, waste management, is now charging other communities $40 for the disposal of a mattress or a box spring.
Each?
The problem is, these things are really taking up a lot of space in the landfills. Landfill space is valuable. Currently, right now, we use these mattresses, we put them in, we set them aside, we will put them on top of the containers and crush them down and use them actually as a cover. But they do get wet and they're heavy, as you know. A mattress is heavy, box springs are pretty light, but they'll get wet. And they're added to the weight of the container. So, we're paying a disposal fee for that added weight. All of our neighboring communities have fees for mattresses except Litchfield. And Dave seems to think that he has seen a real uptick in mattress deliveries to the facility. And thinks through word of mouth that through family, friends, relatives, just somehow these things are getting to our facility. So, he doesn't want to, he wanted to start off at a $15 fee and try that for a few years, but eventually, we all need to be aware that this fee probably will most likely grow to $40 per set. But that would be, Dave wants to really just kind of get a fee in place for this. It's a big fee. And, you know, he's thinking three, four years down the road that we take another look and maybe have to have a jump. Definitely at the time we renew our contract with waste management, they will not allow mattresses in our new contract. We still have a few years left on our contract. Toilet fee. So, with the change in the recycling market, we used to break up the toilets and we'd just put them in the glass recycling container. They no longer accepting porcelain, so toilets are actually going into the dumpster, going up to the landfill. So, this would be a fee for that. Fire extinguishers, we're not able to dispose, there's a fee to dispose of them. He's just trying to capture $5 to cover his disposal cost. So, that's, the changes down at the transfer facility. The other changes are with the town clerk's office, where on our schedule of fees, we just don't have a boat agent fee listed, but we charge $5. So, we're just updating, making sure that's added to the fee schedule. That's the same for the dredge and fill permit. It's a $10 fee, we're already charging that. And a lot of these things, as Terry pointed out to me, we don't even keep this money. It's a state fee. But we just, we collect it on behalf of the state and then submit to the state. Pool permit fees, $10. We've been charging $10 for several years. It's just not on the fee schedule. We wanted to add it. And then for divorce certified copies, $15. Again, we've always been charging that fee. Certified dog license fine date, right now in our fee schedule, it references May 31st. It has changed to July 15th. And we have a convenience fee where you send your car registration fee into the town clerk's office and for a dollar, we will mail that back to you. We're just putting that on there as well. So, those would be the things that would be noticed in the newspaper, go around on the website, and posted on our Facebook page. So, giving residents notice that we'll be discussing these fee changes on April 8th.
Chair?
Mr. Chair? I have a question on the porcelain, toiletries, tanks, stuff like that. Could that be blended with the masonry, brick, stuff like that, tile?
From what I understand, he's not mixing it with anything else. He's breaking it up and putting it in the dumpster.
Dumpster.
Container. And it must be a reason he can't contaminate, but I could ask, that's why I wanted to, you know, kind of...
Yeah, because it's the same thing as the tile.
And go back and ask Dave. So, you're looking to see, can you break up the porcelain toilets?
Yeah.
Put it in the masonry, the brick?
Or tile, whatever we got. Because we got a lot of tile going there as well. Same material, just not as polished.
Troy, do you know when the last time we looked at these fees were?
It wasn't that long ago. I know the board, I, so it's been just probably over three years. We had one minor dog registration fee, I think we changed. But other than that, about three years ago, before my time, I know there was an effort by the board that went and did certain overhaul of the whole fee schedule.
That was bad.
So, I know that, you know, one of the things that when the building inspector position gets filled, the MRI report had a lot of information about we should really visit our fees that we charge for all the inspectional fees. So, most likely, if someone gets on board, consult with them. That's one action item I'd like to take on, make sure we follow up on it.
Okay.
So, no action, just wanted to, you know, kind of get it out there so we're not dealing with this, you know, next meeting. And if you have any questions and think about this, shoot me an email, whatever, so that I can get answers for it.
Okay, great. Being that it's 6:19, I'd like to open it to public input if we have any.
That's the best. That's excellent public input. I like it.
We'll take it.
Seeing no public input, we'll close public input. Next on the agenda is the review of the transfer facility user guide. Mr. Brown?
So, Dave's been working with his staff and Don at the front desk, coming up with a user guide. He's done a fantastic job, very informational here. And we just wanted, before we get, you know, actually post this on our website, we wanted to make sure the board was aware and had a chance to take a look at it. I've reviewed it. Seems to be very accurate. We'll have to update the fees based on our action on April the 8th. But really good guide. I think citizens will, you know, really appreciate the fact that they just go and get all this information. It's all laid out, very, very simple format, answers all your questions.
It's real inclusive, a bunch of photos in here and everything.
Yeah, very good. Real good job. Yep, did a great job.
Who did that?
Okay, next on the agenda are appointments. We have appointment for the zoning board of adjustments, Richard Riley Jr. with a term to expire on 3/31/2022. A zoning board of adjustments, Albert Gilbo, term expiring 3/31 of 2022. Recreation commission, Michael Boshi, term expiring 3/31 of 22. Recreation commission, Andrew Collins, term expiring 3/31/22. Conservation commission, Roger St. Laurent Jr., term expiring 3/31 of 2022. Planning board, Dr. Kimberly Queenen, term expiring 3/31/22. Planning board, Kate Stevens, term expiring 3/31/22. And the interim zoning administrator, Troy Brown, town administrator. Mr. Brown?
Okay, so these, I've received feedback from all the committee chairs on this. So, these folks are all ready to be reappointed. They've indicated that they want to be reappointed and the chairs support their reappointment. So, normally, this is the first step we'll take and then we'll figure out how many vacant positions we have and we'll start trying to, you know, do a little public push to get some volunteer interest.
Okay. So, therefore, we're looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, in light of that, I move that all of the above red appointments be approved as written.
Motion by Mr. Lemire. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstained? Passes 5-0-0.
Are you ready for this, Troy?
Next is PFAS Community Health Fair, April 3rd, at the Merrimack High School, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so, New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, they started this initiative about six months ago, working with various health officials in the state. So, I think this is something that came down from the commissioner. And so, we're gonna have a community health fair. It's gonna be on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019, at the Merrimack High School Cafeteria. It's gonna start at 5:00. I think the venue is really like, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 and you can just walk in and there'll be different booths where there'll be representatives from all types of nonprofit groups, local hospitals, that really specialize in, you know, toxic chemicals and health-related matters. So, a really good opportunity for residents that have gone through, you know, switching over their water, knowing that they've been exposed to PFAS for some years, can go there and hopefully just learn a lot more and maybe get some, you know, actual help questions answered or maybe get some resources to, you know, to learn more. We'll be posting this around again on, get the word out. Definitely, they wanted all the communities impacted to share this information.
Yeah, I believe I saw it on our town website.
Yeah, that's right. John posted this out later.
Chair. Okay, next we have the Stonyfield 5K on April 20th, 2019, at 10:00 AM. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so, a new event. You know, sometimes road races can cause problems. Hopefully, this one's small enough that, and the impact's minimal. It's Sony, Sony 5K, I think it's actually around Earth Day. It's partnering up with Millennium Running. It's gonna be a 5K road race. It starts at the West Road Soccer Fields in Lunandary and will proceed down West Road, down the Hillcrest, turn into Rookery, down Tannager, and loop back to the West Road Soccer Field. So, there'll be a combination of Lunandary and Litchfield police officers doing traffic detail. This has already gone through the police department and they've signed off on the event. Should be fun.
If Kurt signs up, I'll go.
Are you attending?
I have registered, so I haven't run in a while, so it's gonna be a big challenge to try to actually do a 5K. But I'm sure I'll pull it off.
Okay, great.
Good luck.
Actually, we had one additional item added to the business, the purchase and sale.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, the lot, the property that was approved by the voters to purchase to help improve the intersection down the recycling facility. Our legal counsel and the seller's legal counsel has been working on a purchase and sale agreement. It just came in late today. Everyone's in agreement with it. This just sets out the terms and conditions and, you know, we'll start working on doing the title check and, you know, it should be a relatively easy property to close on because we're not, we're not financing, you know, not seeking finances. So, the critical thing will be the title research.
Before you...
So, I would ask that the board make a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement for VAB Properties LLC. And then we'll start proceeding forward with the purchase.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have to, I have to step in and say, I have to abstain.
Okay. Motion carries 4-0-1. Next on the agenda are reports and other business. First is administrative report.
Just wanted to let the board know, it's been going on for a while, but Eversource Energy, PSNA, they filed a tax abatement appeal with, I think, almost every town in the state of New Hampshire, going back to the tax year 2014, 15, 16, 17. And the whole, the basis of the tax appeal is they're arguing that towns and municipalities, cities don't have a right to actually tax Eversource for the use of the right-of-way to place their poles and conduits. So, this has been going on for a while. We have agreed, this board actually agreed, that we would join legal efforts with about 43 other towns. So, the legal counsel is handling that in. And then the special appraisal services, which is Sans Souci's appraisal company, which handled the Penechak appraisal for us, they're representing as the technical advisors the 43 other towns as well. So, anyhow, we received notice that we'll have a hearing on November 5th, 2019. So, it'll be, you're gonna start hearing a lot between now and November 5th because there's all these little milestones in between now and November 5th. So, where we had a new board, I wanted to make sure you're aware of this and we'll continue to be talking about it over the next few months. I'm sure things will, I'd be surprised if November 5th really happens. These things usually drag on for years.
Well, because there's legislature being conquered to deal with this. So, we'll see how that shakes out. Crossover day is April 11th. So, we'll see how the House and Senate work on it.
Oh, this is gonna be fun. Every town in the state.
Just FYI, National Regional Planning Commission, they have moved from their office in Merrimack to they are now downtown on 30 Temple Street in Nashville. So, if some of you ever attend any of those meetings, that's, just be aware that they're, they've got a new location downtown Nashville.
Parking?
Yeah, the parking's supposed to be there at 30 Temple Street. Dedicated parking lot, they assure us, that you don't have to pay for and, ooh, should have a space, so we'll see. And also, the first, I'll be attending, there's been a big effort for all the communities that are... communities that are, um, in the, um, Stormwater Coalition. We're having our first Stormwater Coalition meeting. It's gonna be in Manchester, uh, Wednesday, the 27th, and that's gonna be pretty much the whole day, 8:30 till 1:30. So it's gonna be interesting. There's a lot of networking, just, there'll be some set program as well. But it'll be good to be able to meet other communities, talk to them about what they're doing in their towns, uh, with the stormwater mandate by the EPA. And just wanted to give you a heads up, I'll be attending a Right to Know workshop sponsored by the New Hampshire Municipal Association in Derry tomorrow night, uh, 6:30 to 8:30. We're at the Derry Municipal Center. That's all I have.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to selectmen reports, um, since two have gone past. Mr. Schaefer, you have anything to report?
Excuse me, because of, uh, voting, I wasn't at the last recreation meeting. But there is one tomorrow night.
Thank you. Mr. Lemire?
Uh, just the Heritage Commission is tomorrow night. Uh, April 9th, I'm sorry.
Close, that's close.
Uh, 10th. It's next Tuesday.
Do I hear an 11?
It's not, not this, it's next Tuesday.
I have nothing to report from the planning board. I was traveling during, uh, for business during the last meeting. With that, we have no items removed from consent. We have no other business. A reminder, the PFAS Community Health Fair is April 3rd at Merrimack High School from 5 to 8. The next regular Board of Selectmen meeting will be April 9th. With no other business, I'd take a motion to adjourn at 6:31 PM.
Before that, uh, Bob and I knew, I'd like to say something to the people of Little Litchfield. Thank you for voting. Appreciate it. Uh, as you all know, the reason why I'm going, I, I did it was to have opened this and the whole nine yards, and that's still my goal. I just wanted to make sure you, uh, that you all know it, set them on TV. Hi, people. Just want to say this, okay? Thank, thank you. I just want to thank the people for putting their faith in me, and hopefully I'll do you a good job. Over the cameras, hi. Thanks to my wife for standing next to me.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 6:32 PM.
My mother as well.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Schaefer?
Second.